Good evening. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, February 24, 2015. Please join the school committee in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Congdon?
Present.
Mr. Lebo?
Present.
Dr. Page?
Present.
Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mrs. Queen?
Present.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
All present?
Thank you. Please also note the presence of Mr. Boisvert. I just, um, on the desk. Thank you. Next is public input. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address the school committee this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to the approval of the consent agenda. The following items are on this evening's consent agenda. Meeting minutes of the regular school committee, February 3, 2015. We have policy first readings of policy BDEF, voting method; policy BGE, policy dissemination; policy BHC, school committee staff communications; policy BHE, the use of electronic messaging by school committee members; policy BIA, new school committee member orientation; policy BIBA, school committee conferences, conventions, and workshops; policy BJ, school committee legislative program. We also have on the consent agenda the third reading and adoption of three policies. Policy BEE, special procedures for hearings; policy BGD, school committee review of procedures; and policy BK, school committee memberships. And finally, on the consent agenda is revocation of a policy GBD, school committee staff communications, which is an identical duplicate of BHC existing. So, does any member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda this evening? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to remove policy BHC, school committee staff communications.
Okay.
And policy BIA, new school committee member orientation.
Okay. Mrs. Donovan has requested those be moved. We can move and you can discuss them.
Perhaps just under new business where they're first readings, anyway.
Sure. Is there any other item to be removed from the consent agenda this evening? If none, items for A, 1; for B, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
No, 3. Took out 3.
1, 2, 4, 5.
No. 1, 2, 4, 6.
1, 2, 4, 6, 7. For C, 1, 2, 3, and for D, 1.
Yep.
Sorry about that. Those are the items that are currently before you. If there's no objection, these items will be adopted through the consent agenda. Seeing no objection, these items are hereby adopted by consent of the school committee. Thank you. Under chairperson's announcements, very quickly this evening, the Federation for Children with Special Needs presents Basic Rights in Special Education, a workshop for parents and professionals, on Wednesday, March 4, 2015. This will be held at the Southbridge Public Schools Central Services Office in Room 100 at 25 Cole Avenue in Southbridge. The time is 7 to 9 PM. And if you'd like to contact, if you have any questions, please contact Elizabeth Scanlon, 508-764-5414, extension 417. A presenter from the Federation for Children with Special Needs will conduct the workshop, which is free and open to the public. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. That's the extent of my announcements this evening. Under presentations, at the last meeting, I noted that there were two additional John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients. And I just would like to take a moment to announce their names publicly and recognize them. They weren't able to join us this evening. First, we have Lemis Melendez and Kenneth Burgos. So we have some certificates for them that we will give to Mrs. Earls, and she will make sure that they receive them. And next, for a presentation, we're pleased to welcome Mrs. Earls and members of her team, I don't know, who will be presenting the student spotlight for Southbridge Middle High School. Good evening and thank you for coming.
Thank you. Let me just get the technology up and running.
Sure.
Mr. Long, take me promise this is going to work just fine. So I'm here tonight to present the Southbridge Middle High School response to the Accelerated Improvement Plan. And I want to thank Superintendent Stanton and Katie Juris, who created a template for us to use. We start the template with the four strategic objectives that are included with the Accelerated Improvement Plan. So I know you'll see this a number of times when each of the schools presents this year. Strategic objective 1 is to develop, refine, and implement curricula for all K-12 core subjects and instructional practices aligned to Common Core and WIDA standards. Strategic objective 2, expand and embed the use of data, K to 12, to foster a cycle of continuous improvement aimed at assessing and improving instructional practices throughout the district. Strategic objective 3, improve educator quality and ability to implement rigorous and engaging instruction. And strategic objective 4, increase parent and community involvement to enhance student learning. And again, those are district-wide accelerated improvement strategic objectives. So I'd like to spend time tonight talking about how these school improvement goals for Southbridge Middle High School align to the strategic objectives in our AIP. So for each strategic objective in the district accelerated improvement plan, we have developed at SMHS a goal with aligned objectives and evaluation measures. And this represents a strong through line from the district's vision for improvement and what we expect to see in classrooms at the middle high school. So on the first slide, you see that we plan to support the district's goal to implement curricula by monitoring the implementation of the newly revised math and ELA curriculum maps across all grade levels at the middle high school. We are measuring our progress in large part through announced and unannounced classroom observations, non-evaluative building walkthroughs, and routine reviews of planning documents such as lesson plans and teachers' cumulative binders. And these are binders that the teachers submit as proof that they are meeting their teaching standards as part of the new evaluation system. For your edification only, and on this slide, you'll see a reference to district determined measures, or DDMs. And those are state mandates that require schools and districts to develop ways in which we measure teacher impact on student learning. Right now, our departments are working with administration in the building and central office, specifically Ms. Stanton, to create approved DDMs this year. So we have some evidence of how we are meeting this first goal for our school improvement plan. Between September of this year and this past January, our administrative team members, three of whom are here with me tonight, the assistant principals, have completed the following reviews. And I just want to note that every teacher has received multiple forms of feedback through the end of January. We have reviewed 415 sets of instructional lesson plans and the evidence binders that I referenced with feedback provided. We have conducted 104 announced or unannounced teacher observations, again, with feedback provided, and 207 non-evaluative walkthroughs are conducted. So each teacher in our building has received actionable feedback in various forms this year. All teachers have had lesson plans reviewed multiple times. Every teacher required to submit a binder, who did submit a binder, has received comments today with a few exceptions, including specific requests for additional information when applicable. The educator evaluation system at the middle high school is fully documented this year. To date, 28 new teachers, 24 year 2, 3 teachers, and four guidance counselors are all on target to receive the appropriate number of observations, evaluations, and feedback notes. This includes, for example, goal setting, an announced and two unannounced observations, and an evidence binder review, plus a formative evaluation for all new teachers. And the requirements are slightly lower for our year 2, 3 teachers. Teachers with professional status are on a different evaluation schedule by state law, but they are also receiving unannounced observation visits and will submit evidence binders in April and receive an evaluation later this spring. We use the non-evaluative walkthroughs to collect data in the aggregate, and this allows us to look at some school-wide trends, and I'll visit that in a second. I wanted to provide samples of the kind of lesson plan, binder review, and observation feedback related to curriculum that we provide. And we are going to share these feedback samples as part of our AIP check-in tomorrow as well. I want to explain some of the pieces of evidence associated with these four teaching standards, if you choose. I know I was asked about an annotation review guide. An annotation review guide referenced here as evidence for standard 1 curriculum planning is a review guide that was provided for the students to supplement instruction in one of our instructional focus areas, annotation. And the simplest way for me to explain annotation, I guess, is that it asks students to read thoughtfully with a pen in hand. It asks them to make marks in the text, to note what they have questions on, to note what strikes them when they're reading. So it's basically reading as you might any academic material with a pencil in hand. So binder evidence is provided by the teachers for each of the four standards. And you'll see in this one, which is an actual, a redacted piece of feedback that was provided to a teacher, that this teacher did not include evidence for standard 3, so it was noted as missing. And we would note in that case that there are gaps in binder submission that have to be rectified. And we would ask them to include samples for standards 1 and 2, that they need to include for evidence of actual implementation, and also all of the evidence for standard 3. And we also make some probing questions to try and guide them with the kind of evidence they might provide to show that they are meeting standard 3. Madam Chair, do you want to wait till the end for questions, I'm assuming?
Uh, yeah. We'll wait.
Okay. Sure. And so here is some feedback that is provided on an unannounced observation. And again, this is only an excerpt of the feedback provided. There would be many more bullet points. I just picked out some bullet points that would be related to curriculum, since that is the first goal that we're talking about. Student objective posted in friendly terms, but I do ask that they add the curriculum standard notation, and that reference, the curriculum standard notation found in the mass frameworks, which are aligned to the Common Core. So how do I know that that objective is aligned? What's an easy way for me to tell is an evaluator, when I walk into a room, that the objective that the teacher is working on is aligned with the state standards. It's for that teacher to have that state standard noted, and then I can go and cross-reference that with the actual curriculum maps. A do-now is displayed. A do-now is an activator at the start of a lesson. It might recall an objective from a previous lesson, or it might ask the students to participate in an activity or answer a question, which would then preview the objective that was going to be covered that day. In this case, it was related to a previously taught objective, and that objective was a mathematical building block to the currently posted objective. So you can see the relation. I speak a lot about the classroom and the learning environment here. The classroom was appointed with content-related displays, which are important. And especially important is evidence of student assessment in the form of posted student work. We like to see work samples of what the students are actually doing when we walk into a classroom that proves to us that the lessons are actually implemented and that the students have participated in assessments, so their comprehension is being checked. The teacher in this case insisted on accuracy and precision, which is critical when learning mathematical facts. And the teacher's choice of supplementary curriculum materials and manipulatives was effective and fully aligned with the posted objective. In other words, the students were working on activities using materials that linked directly back to the posted objective. There was a nice line from the posted objective through the student activities, including the materials, to the assessment that was used at the end of the lesson to judge comprehension. The next slide notes non-evaluative walkthrough data. Now, the non-evaluative walkthrough data is collected, again, in the aggregate, and it does not point to specific teachers. So it is not actionable in a specific way in that sense, but it is actionable in the whole. So we correspond with the faculty. I, for example, send a daily memo to the faculty at the end of every day. We also correspond to the faculty in meetings and professional development sessions. And during those sessions, we can address what we see as school-wide trends. So, for example, at the start of the year here, and these are the standards in the walkthrough that are related directly to curriculum, again, we see the objectives, we see the use of effective learning materials, and we see alignment with the curriculum maps. And we see a sharp spike in some of these areas and a slightly different spike in some of these areas in the early months of school. And we believe this is because in the early months of school, our expectations were clearly defined for teachers in terms of what we expect to see when we walk into a classroom. We expect to see posted objectives in specific locations. We expect that the lessons in math and ELA specifically are aligned to the curriculum maps. And we expect teachers to be making effective use of the materials on hand. So once the expectations were clearly defined and that was, again, revisited through observation notes, so the teachers were internalizing the feedback, we did see a sharp spike in the teacher's compliance there. We also see that there's some leveling off in terms of effective learning material. For example, this is something we're going to keep in mind as we look at the budget for next year. Teachers running out of effective learning material, are they seeking other learning material? Why is that leveling off is something we would get to the bottom of. I wanted to share with you our school-wide student learning and professional practice goals, because they relate directly to goal 1 or standard 1 here. So the first is a school-wide student learning goal. Seventy-five percent of all students will perform at a proficient level, which is indicated at a grade of 70 percent or a C or higher on each quarterly assessment. But students who don't meet this benchmark the first time around are going to be targeted through embedded reteaching and then reassessed to show 50 percent growth for targeted standards. And the second is our professional practice goal. Teachers will participate in the design, creation, and pilot implementation of a trial district determined measure, or DDM, that we discussed earlier, to be administered during the 2014-2015 school year. The DDM will measure student learning, growth, or achievement, and will be closely aligned to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks or other relevant frameworks. Going to give some examples now of the data cycle related to the quarterly assessments that are referenced in our goals. At the middle school level, we use the Achievement Network, or ANET, and that is what we use for our quarterly assessments. This first slide represents some math data. You'll see that each teacher identifies his or own priority standards, which are the curriculum standards, the students didn't learn well the first time the students were taught. The teacher reteaches those standards and reassesses the students to determine whether or not they show growth. In this case, you can see there was some significant growth after the reteaching effort. So one of the most critical components of the ANET system for us has been to make the data cycle of the reteaching and reassessment something that is part of our routine instructional opportunities. The next slide is the same, but it's related to ELA, or English Language Arts. Again, middle school and related to ANET data on the quarterly assessment. So you can see the growth from the first time the assessment was administered and then after the reteaching, and a new assessment was then administered. In the final column here, you see the reteaching notes, and they were also included in the previous slide. Those are some of the notes that the teachers provide during their professional reflection on how they re-taught, what they did differently from the first time they taught the concept to the second time. We also have some quarterly data collected at the high school level. This is just a sample. I'll visit more at the end of the presentation. And this is for math, quarter 2. For 3 of the content areas, algebra 1, geometry, and algebra 2. So this represents a number of teachers in each. And this is the proficient after the initial assessment. Because some of the snow days and the vacation week, our schedule was thrown off, so we're doing reteaching this week. And there will be reassessment depending on the content area, either at the end of this week or the very beginning of next week. And so we'll be happy to provide that reassessment information. So all that was objective 1, and now we'll go to objective 2. And the other objectives are slightly shorter. Objective 2 has to do with expanding the effective use of data. At SMHS, we're focusing our data efforts on strengthening the data and reporting systems to track our students' progress towards graduation. So for us, this includes a renewed commitment to crafting educational proficiency plans, which are EPPs, for students as applicable. And it also includes a thorough review of each student's academic transcript to facilitate the timely identification of students in jeopardy. And that would be in jeopardy of not progressing or in jeopardy of not graduating on time. So some of the data we're collecting here and that we have at our fingertips, when called upon, is grade 12 MCAS tracking data. And these are draft projections as of February 13, which is the Friday before the break. So as of February 13, our grade 12 MCAS tracking data showed us that 41 students identified as current members of grade 12 have met all MCAS requirements. And this includes 2 students who meet MCAS requirements through alternative assessment. Forty-six students will meet all MCAS conditions by the end of the academic year, once they meet their educational proficiency plan or EPP requirements. And, for example, that's to pass an assigned course or participate in tutoring, whatever the specific EPP might be. Nineteen students out of our current grade 12 class, and that is projected to be the class of 2015, 19 students need to retest in one or more MCAS content areas to meet the requirements. This includes 15 students who were required to take the February biology retest. All 15 did participate. We do not have those scores yet. Four must retest in ELA, and 14 must retest in math. And to put this in perspective, at the time of the presentation, there were 106 students identified as grade 12. And if you add up 41, 46, and 19, you'll see that all 106 students are accounted for in terms of where they stand with their MCAS requirements. And we have done the same with grade 11, thinking ahead, wanting to project and figure out where we're going. Sixty-one students have met their MCAS requirements in grade 11. Thirty-seven will meet all MCAS conditions by the end of the year if they meet their EPP requirements. And 43 members of the grade 11 or junior class, class of 2016, 43 need to retest in one or more MCAS content areas to meet the requirements. This includes 42 students who are required to take the February biology retest. Thirty-eight of the 42 did participate. Again, we do not have scores. The other four were absent those days despite significant efforts on the part of the assistant principals, especially Mr. Coggins, to contact and make home visits. We did not get those four in to take that test. Ten must retest in ELA, and 28 must retest in math. And just so you know, the retests begin next week for us. So our plans are already well underway for our MCAS retests. Final evidence notes under objective 2. Our next retest opportunities, like I said, are in March. They begin next week. We are awaiting the results of the February biology retest at this time. All grade 11 and grade 12 students requiring EPPs prior to the November retest information are now assigned an approved EPP. All required EPPs following the November retest school report are currently under development, because these school reports were released in late January. And members of administration and guidance are currently analyzing the class of 2015 course grade information. As of a transcript review conducted on February 13, 28 seniors face actual or potential recovery needs. So we've spoken individually with these 28 students. Unique letters home for each of the 28 are being prepared this week. I met with guidance department just prior to the break to discuss credit recovery options, including a Saturday school. The state does leave credit recovery options up to the discretion of the school. Members of administration, some who are here tonight, have personally volunteered to be part of a Saturday school effort established for credit recovery. Now, again, these 28 seniors face actual or potential. There are a small number, a single-digit number, who are going to have a very difficult time meeting graduation requirements before the first week in June. The others, with some intervention and effort, do have potential of walking onstage or walking across the field in the beginning of June. And that takes us to strategic objective 3. Earlier, we discussed our attentions to curricular initiatives. We talked about the educator evaluation system. That's our system for evaluating our instructional staff and providing actionable feedback. And the system is on track at the middle high school at this point. We've created a shared online document, which enables central office, specifically the superintendent or our DESI partners, to monitor our progress towards reaching this goal. So we have evidence of that. And I have received feedback from the superintendent related to our evaluation system and the feedback that we're providing. Most recently, earlier this week, Superintendent Stanton and I had an exchange about feedback. She asked some questions. I was able to respond. So that enables us as evaluators to really think deeply about the kind of feedback we're providing and to think about how we might enhance that feedback at the next observation. We do present a monthly report to central office via the principal's dashboard. This is an AIP tracking document. I have weekly check-ins with our DESI monitor, Pat Jackman, who tracks our progress toward the goal of meeting the educator evaluation benchmarks. And our current timeline is on track for successful attainment of the evaluation system I wanted to provide, and I won't read all of this for you. I know the slide is difficult to read from here, but these are samples of observation feedback related to instructional practice. And here, again, is some of the feedback, which we'll also present to our DESI plan monitor tomorrow. You can see from the comments, when we focus on instructional practice, we focus on comprehension checks. These are checks to make sure that the students are understanding the concepts and skills being introduced and taught. Do they understand them? If not, how does the teacher adjust instruction to meet the needs of all students? We don't necessarily wait for a red-letter date on the calendar to reteach. We are constantly readjusting and reteaching as we assess in class, even if that means our plans for the week are put off by a day, bumped for a period or two. We want to make sure that the students are following us, so we conduct comprehension checks. And as evaluators, that's probably the activity we look for most frequently. How does the teacher know that the students are understanding the concepts that are being presented? We also focus on student engagement, the students on task. Are they actively learning? Are they participating? We focus on the incorporation of higher-order thinking skills, teachers asking students to make inferences. Are they asking students to make predictions? Are they citing evidence from text? And what is the overall culture and climate in the classroom? Is it a place that's conducive to learning? And do students want to be there? And that will take us to objective 4. Objective 4 is the objective that asks us to increase meaningful parent and community involvement, so that we can enhance our student learning. We all know that strong parental engagement will increase a student's chance to find academic success. The baseline data related to this objective provided to SMHS at the start of the year was low, so we knew that this was an objective and a goal that we would have to find innovative ways to try and meet. We needed to raise that baseline data going into next year. So what I provided here are a list of events held by month and attendance notes. Most of the attendance notes are accurate, and where there are approximations, I've noted that. We've had events such as orientations, athletic program information nights, theater department productions, parent-teacher conferences. So reporting on some of the events at the middle high school, some of the events, you can see, were successful. They exceeded our expectations, such as the grade 6 orientation. We talked a lot about that at the start of the year. Sixty-six families, over 200 people showed up for that grade 6 orientation. Unprecedented. That was great. But then other activities, such as our grade 9 open house, they fell flat, and they were not well attended. So we've discussed that event in particular. We discussed it with ILT just today. And what can we do to increase participation there? Do we want to incorporate a student-centered display of talent? Do we want to serve spaghetti or have a pizza night? Or do we want to somehow combine grade 9 orientation with our grade 8 awards night, when we already have the parents in? These are ideas that are all floating out. How do we increase attendance? So we don't want to sit back and rest on the events that were well attended. We want to also pick out the events that are necessary, such as a grade 9 orientation or open house, and figure out how can we get more families in. The next slide goes through the fall and early winter. We have reestablished our student of the quarter breakfast, and that attracted students and families. That's a nice event. I know that some of the school committee members have been in attendance as parents. We did not attract a high turnout for the college financial aid night. Might it be better to have a hands-on night where we can help parents apply and help parents navigate the FAFSA? Is that a way to draw more parents in? So these are the things, again, we're talking about. How do we enhance attendance for those events that were not well attended? On this slide, I just want to point out that we have reestablished our school council, which is now active and meets monthly. And the membership of that school council includes teachers, parents, students, and a representative community member. The activities they've participated in to date include reviewing the school improvement plan before its submission, and they have provided some preliminary budget planning input for us at the start of the budget cycle. input for us at the start of the budget cycle. We have also incorporated a principal advisory council, and that advisory council meets weekly. Active members include four to eight students, depending on the Tuesday morning, and they meet with us on a weekly basis. They assist in the planning of school-wide events, such as a lot of the events that were held over Thanksgiving. They also have had some input in terms of the upcoming winter carnival that I believe Mr. Boisvert's going to mention in a little bit. And finally, I'm providing some additional assessment data results. This is the initial quarterly assessment data results for the start of quarter two or for quarter two. Again, reassessment is scheduled but has not taken place yet, so we'd like to see what numbers are going to jump up there. As you can see, we do need to reteach and reassess for quarter two. And I did highlight our most urgent need of area of concern, ELA grade eleven. Very concerned about that result, very anxious to see the results of reteaching, and also personally reviewing some student work associated with ELA grade eleven and this particularly quarterly assignment. And finally, I gave a supplementary ANET slide. This is actually a slide prepared by the Achievement Network. It's part of their data dashboard. It demonstrates our results, and it shows our results in comparison to the network. The network is a group of sixty-four schools that also participate in the ANET assessment and data cycle. When you look at this slide, you see that compared to these schools, math emerges as an area of need, but it only demonstrates our performance compared to these schools. It doesn't reflect the performance compared to the state. Our PPI percentile, that was discussed by the state a few weeks ago, that's based on MCAS performance compared to schools statewide. So this comparison, which shows us favorable in ELA and slightly behind in math, is only based on a comparison with sixty-four schools, not statewide. So what are we doing to address our deficiencies? And in addition to the ideas I've visited throughout the presentation, here are some ideas we have. We want some additional robust in-class coaching. Does that mean restructuring administration slightly so that we free up our academic dean and our math IRS to get into classrooms more frequently than they have been? This is something that the superintendent and Mr. Orsman and I discussed this week. Meaningful instructional observation feedback cycles, including teacher reflections on professional practice. This is a piece that is missing and one that I often comment on. We will provide actionable feedback to our teachers. We will visit the teachers again, we will make additional observations. We'll see a lot of the feedback incorporated, but there are opportunities for the teachers to reflect and correspond with us in our evaluation system online tracking tool, and that is only taking advantage of minimally. I would like to see more reflection on the part of the teachers. Targeted data review and analysis, including specific next action steps. As we look at student performance data, we want to have meaningful conversations via the department heads, via the coaches, via administration about what specifically are you going to do with these students when you reteach, as specific as possible. Explore incentivizing students to attract them to attend extra help in tutoring sessions. We've offered tutoring opportunities and on many occasions not taken advantage of, and they're of no cost, so how do we incentivize the students? We do have the after-school transportation, that hasn't been the issue. What else do we need to do? Create stronger orientation and initiation programs at grade six and nine to establish a cultural achievement at the start, when the students first enter and when they first transition. And continue to add innovative ways to reach out to families and the community. Any questions? I'll start over this side. Any questions for Mrs. Earls? Let's go start over here. Any questions here? Were you all set, Dr. Page?
I have a few questions through you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I think it does a pretty good job of highlighting some serious areas where we have some deficiencies. So the question that I have is that you've conducted a lot of non-evaluative walkthroughs, and it doesn't seem to be, in most cases, on the data that you showed over the last several months, other than the initial uptick following the opening of school, that you're getting much improvement there. So is that valuable to you, in the sense that since it's non-evaluative, you don't have any teeth, you know, to sort of force people to address the feedback? And it seems like the feedback is being given because you're seeing these charts and numbers of things not improving in certain categories. So I'd like to get maybe a little more information on your view of that.
Timely question, because we talked in DLT with Superintendent Stanton today about the non-evaluative walkthroughs and what the future of those non-evaluative walkthroughs are going to look like at SMHS, but district-wide. So we're working with our DSAC, which is our district and school assistance center, and our representative there, and with Ms. Stanton, to redefine the walkthrough tool we use perhaps, but also potentially to redefine the entire non-evaluative walkthrough idea. It isn't as valuable to me, it's much more valuable to me when I can walk into a classroom, like Mr. Will Coxon's, who's here tonight. When I can walk into a classroom, I can see something specific, I can pull him aside afterwards, and I can reflect on what I saw with him. Because only then can I really give actionable feedback. Only then can I tell him specifically. Otherwise, I do what I said, which is to talk to the aggregate, to talk to the whole staff. But we all know when we read a memo that goes out to a hundred-plus, you know, staff members, do we internalize that constructive criticism or even praise? Do we internalize that as our own, or do we let it slide by? So it isn't, right now, it isn't as meaningful as the specific feedback.
I have a few additional questions, if that's okay, Madam Chair?
Please.
Yeah. So it seems to me like, in looking at the data here, that the retest numbers for grade eleven and twelve for MCAS are extraordinarily high in biology compared to math and English. Is that an accurate assessment?
That's an accurate assessment.
Okay, so what, do you have an idea of what the root cause of that might be and what plans might be going forward to try and figure out where those deficiencies are with our students?
Right. There's a couple of things we're thinking about now. One is looking at the next generation science standards, which are the new science standards. How are we going to align our curriculum and our scope and sequence, our pathway, with the next generation science standards? What are we going to teach at which grade level? So we're actually going so far as to discussing whether or not we teach a different content area in science, such as physics, at the freshman level, which tests the students are taking and at which time. Biology can be offered in one year or over two years, so some of it depends on when the students are testing, whether or not they're taking the test, at the end of the freshman year or the end of the sophomore year, and how much they've retained, you know, retained the content. The other thing we're talking about are textbooks. The one area that I would like to purchase new textbooks or some additional textbooks in, and we've discussed this with budget, is science. Are textbooks up to date? Are they the most accessible textbooks for our students? What's their usability for our kids? That's another issue.
Should I continue?
Please, yeah.
So you've identified that you have twenty-eight seniors that are, you know, in these credit recovery needs right now for this year. And so you've talked about a couple of things that you might do in terms of holding Saturday classes or whatever in order to address that. Do you have an idea how that is going to impact us in terms of expenses going forward? Because this would be something that we're not really on our radar in terms of expenditures.
It might, although we've... We have thankfully looked at our high school or middle high school budget recently, and we have been conservative this year. So we do have a little bit of room to fund a credit recovery program. And again, we've also talked in terms of administration, there are a few of us who are willing to volunteer to be there and implement this credit recovery, so I'm hoping that'll be a cost savings. Costs for materials will be minimal, copy paper, making copies, we have the books on hand. It's basically credit recovery is really just reintroducing and giving the students a chance to earn credit for content they should have learned. So by definition, we have the materials onboard. We also have access to different online materials, and we can use credit recovery options that way. Salaries or stipends would be the significant expense, so I'm playing on the hot springs of my administrators. So we'll be there on Saturdays with the kids.
I'm sorry, I don't want to monopolize time, I just have a lot of questions here. So one of the things that was highlighted or jumped out at me was really important when DESI was here. They made a couple of comments. One was that we seem to be really not doing very well in the family-community engagement aspect of things, and your numbers seem to be showing that. My question is, how do we accurately quantify that? Because if you show, you know, the data table you showed is the event and then how many people showed up or families or whatever, but what would be the acceptable expectation? Or how would you measure whether or not sixty-six families showing up to an orientation or however many showing up to whatever event is a good number? How do we benchmark those?
Well, nothing's a good number until we get a hundred percent of our families engaged in some activity. So nothing is going to be something that'll satisfy us until every family shows up for at least one event throughout the year. But we see some success because our baseline data was so low going into this year, so we do feel like we've made some efforts to reach out and to engage the families. For me, that same seventy-five percent number that we're using for students, seventy-five percent of our students are supposed to be proficient, I would love for seventy-five of our families to be proficient, which means I would love for seventy-five percent of our families to show up for these important events. I think things like start-of-the-year orientation, academic information nights, parent-teacher conferences, these are critical events. If I had seventy-five percent of our families show up for these events, and there is a parent-teacher night tomorrow, by the way, that would represent significant success.
I guess a really quick follow-up to that is, have you noticed any differences in the method of notification or whatever that correlate with sort of success or better attendance in one event versus another, or are you...
Not in methods of communication, not in the method of invitation. For example, I do the weekly phone calls, which are accompanied by an email. We are doing those bilingually. We're not seeing a correlation there. We see correlations when it involves something that the students are participating in actively. The grade six orientation, which was so well-attended, we had a number of student groups, clubs, organizations on display that afternoon and evening, and that seemed to draw out families. Any of the music concerts, theater productions, those draw families, so what we did was try to take advantage of those events by also distributing some academic information related to our instructional focus and try and get them while they're there. That's why we tossed around the idea of the eighth-grade awards night, and do we take advantage of that awards night, either just before or just after, and dovetail it with a grade-nine orientation while we have the parents there? So if the kids are engaged, if the kids are doing something, if the kids are showcasing, that's the correlation.
Okay. And Madam Chair, one last question, I promise? Is, when DESI was here and they presented sort of their overview of the district, one of the things that I remember they highlighted was, as a concern, was a relatively high rate of failure at the middle high school, and I can't remember exactly what it was in terms of course failures as an issue. And could you maybe give a little, a bit of your perspective on maybe the reason for that, or what's being done about it?
Course failures, the percentage has increased, and I think that, we alluded to that a couple of weeks, and a couple of weeks ago, I think that the superintendent also did. We raised some expectations. We raised some expectations in class, but we also raised and realigned expectations for meeting graduation requirements. So students were rescheduled at the start of the year into different courses, and some of those courses come with stricter expectations, more stringent expectations for performance, more stringent expectations for the work the kids are expected to do. So I think there is a little bit of a correlation there. There's also work that I need to do with the teachers. Are our teachers effectively reaching our kids? Are our teachers effectively reteaching? Are they working with our students to make sure that the curriculum and the knowledge is accessible to our kids? Are they teaching all students? I own that, that's work I still need to do with teachers. That's a struggle I'm still having.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Quinney, did you want to ask?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mrs. Earls, thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for your presentation. I, not surprisingly to anyone, have a lot of questions. Objective one, goal one, under objectives, you talk about lesson plans and implementation. My question would be, does every teacher at SMHS turn in lesson plans that are aligned or turn in or post lesson plans that are aligned with the new curriculum? You said that everyone's gotten feedback on their lesson plans.
Yes, the new curriculum is only math in ELA. But every teacher is required to post either online, and the vast majority do use planbook.com, which is our tracking tool, more than ninety-eight percent use planbook.com. Some of the others still do, I don't want to call it old-fashioned, but I'll call it old-fashioned planbooks. Some of them still do use those. Every teacher is required to. When a teacher does not turn in, that's the feedback they receive, is you need to turn this in. So it is a requirement.
All right. Thank you. Regarding the evidence, you talked about instructional plans and the evidence binders. Is that a place that would indicate what percentage certain things are worth in a grading of a student? How much homework is worth, projects, that sort of information?
Not necessarily, no. Teacher gets to pick their own pieces of evidence that they include in the evidence binder. Many did include, as part of the parent-family engagement standard, standard three, many did include their course syllabus or course requirements, yes.
Thank you. And you also talked about the instructional plans or the lesson plan being objective, being posted in student-friendly terms.
Yes.
Within the room. How often is that, the expectation of that change? So if a teacher has like three preps, would that be changed three times during the day?
Absolutely, for every class period, if it's a unique class period. Now, if a teacher is teaching two identical Algebra II sections.
That would be the same.
It might be the same objective.
So those objectives are changed every...
They're specific to the class period, right? Most teachers that have their own room, the teachers that are travelers, will post for the day. A lot of them post a designated area for the whole day.
Okay. Thank you. The percentage, you said there's four hundred and fifteen binders that you reviewed? What percentage does that four hundred and fifteen...
Not four hundred and fifteen binders, four hundred and fifteen either binders or lesson plans.
Okay. Sets of instructional lesson plans. So what percentage of that? Is that every first and second-year teacher before they meet professional status? Is that fifty percent? Is that, how does that fall?
That is every, every teacher in the building has received feedback, either on lesson plans or the binders or both. Every new teacher has received binder feedback and lesson plan feedback. Most year two, three, we have nine that are left to receive binder feedback. We have some time still before March second. We have nine year-two, three teachers that have not received binder feedback yet.
Learning objectives, you talked about how manipulatives then indicate what kids were doing, how the materials that they had with them reflected how that objective was being met. There are some questions I have regarding use of movies, per se, or cartoons in a classroom. How would that be able to be aligned to an objective? How would that, how could you reconcile that?
We don't have a lot. We aren't showing a lot of movies. We have a movie permission slip, it says right on it. Watching full-length movies is not an acceptable form. One exception to that, the gym floor was redone, so we had PE students watching Rudy, because I went to Notre Dame, so that was handpicked. And what was the other one they watched? Clash of the Titans? No, I don't know. Remember the Titans? That was it. So we did have a week where we had our PE teachers, they didn't have their gym space. Other than that, it is, full-length movies are not encouraged, and I will make exceptions. Most often, they're for literature, pieces of literature. For example, I have a group that's studying of Mice and Men right now, and they've asked to watch, after they study the text, they've asked to watch an adaptation, a film adaptation of Mice and Men. That's something I would probably approve. When I go into a room and they are looking at video, whether it's full-length or not, one of the actionable feedback items I give, if it's not already in place for that teacher, is how are the students actively watching this movie? Is there a document that they're filling in? Are there specific questions that they're supposed to be mining the material and finding answers for? So that's a feedback that I will give every time I walk into a room and there's some kind of a video. What are the kids doing when they're watching this video? How are they linking that movie or that excerpt to the objective that they're supposed to have been taught?
How are they actively engaging? Excellent. The graph on page seven, which was a little bit alluded to... The graph on page seven, which was a little bit alluded to regarding utilization of curriculum maps. It showed, just for people that aren't able to have that in front of them now, about eighty percent are posting objectives and about sixty-five percent are utilizing effective learning materials and just about all teachers are utilizing the curriculum maps, both in ELA and math. My question was, and you alluded to it a little bit, with that sixty-five percent with the utilization of effective learning materials, is that because there are no effective materials available? Or is it because we, teachers are choosing ineffective materials over effective materials?
It might be because the teacher isn't able to access something that might be more useful. We've had discussions with teachers, for example, in math or science classes where I feel like the use of manipulatives might help more tactile kinesthetic learners be able to internalize the the knowledge or the concept, and we're not using that material. Other times, it could be something as simple as the erasable whiteboards, personal in size, and using those for whole-class comprehension checks. I think that can be more effective than a thumbs up, thumbs down, because everyone knows, you know, you look at what?
Right.
Somebody in the front row might be doing in terms of a thumbs up, thumbs down, and are you really able to see whether or not all students understand? Instead, I like when teachers use something like a portable whiteboard. You count to three and they all show you their answer at once, and you can quickly ascertain the the comprehension level in the classroom. So, it might be any combination of something like that. So, it's not necessarily they don't have access to the materials, although that could be it as well.
Thank you. The school-wide student learning and professional growth practice, that's the seventy-five percent of all students will be proficient, is the goal. And those numbers, I mean, I'm not a fan of ANET, and I think comparing us to the lowest of the lowest-performing school districts is not the goal that we should be setting for ourselves, but that's a discussion for another day. But the highest in ELA and math was after the first teaching was forty percent. That seems terribly scary to me. And then following targeted intervention through reteach, only two of the nine that you gave as examples hadn't met that seventy-five percent at proficient. And then I thought proficient, that's seventy.
Mm-hmm.
That's a C.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're setting the bar pretty low, and we're not even coming close to meeting it, with the exception of two out of nine times, and the example you gave granted, to even get seventy-five percent of our kids to C-level comprehension. Do you have any insights as to why that's where we currently are and how we're gonna move that forward?
Sure, I think it's gonna take some time. I think it's gonna take some time to change the culture of teaching and learning at Southbridge Middle High School. After, you know, four months, I can't, Ms. Quinney, give you all the answers to, for that question. Just to clarify, though, in terms of the goal, it's the students reach the seventy percent or after reassessment, they make fifty percent growth. So, we're using a growth model there, so it's.
I understand the growth model, but if you take the numbers, they're not.
Right, so they're not, they're not hitting the seventy percent.
Some of them are meeting that fifty percent increase, but I would hope that we would be getting to seventy, the level of proficient.
I would hope we get to the point where we're getting to that seventy percent after the first time we teach. I'm hoping that our, you know, our practices, our connections with the students, our connections with the families improve to the point where these kids are getting it the first time around to that level. A hundred percent of the kids are not gonna get everything the first time around. That's that's absolutely certain. There are gonna need to be modifications and accommodations. We understand that. I could not give you a comprehensive answer at this point without going to work every day and keep doing the hard job that it is.
Thank you. The next questions that I had were regarding the math Q2 assessments, which, when the state was here, I said were the most disturbing numbers to me, given that these assessments were Southbridge teacher-generated. So, given that, based on the curriculum maps, based on what they had intended to teach, based on their lesson plans, that these were what teachers had planned to accomplish and have students knowledgeable and proficient in within that quarter period of time. Algebra I, nineteen point eight percent proficient. Algebra II, twenty-five point seven percent proficient. And then geometry, fifty-eight point five percent proficient. And again, proficient is a seventy.
Mm-hmm.
So, only about twenty percent of Algebra I students can get a seventy on the assessment that we designed and implemented. Could one presume, based on those numbers, that about seventy-five percent of students in Algebra I are failing?
No, no, you can't presume that. First of all, this is a quarterly, so it's a summative. It's not a chapter-to-chapter or unit-to-unit or week-to-week test, which are, which chunk the materials into more manageable, manageable pieces for a lot of the students. This is a large summative at the end of the quarter. Not all students perform well on that kind of an assessment. I think that the thing that makes me happy about this is that, and you alluded to, these are Southbridge, you know, they're organic, they're homegrown assessments. I'm glad that our teachers haven't watered those down. They're not gaming any system. You know, this is the data. These are the standards that are supposed to be taught. These are the standards that we are assessing, and, you know, this is the data in black and white. So, no one tried to say, let's create an easier assessment. Let's assess the kids on what they're supposed to be assessed on. So, I'm happy about that piece, but no, it does not mean that that many students are failing because of what I said. This is a, this is a summative assessment, covers a lot of concepts rather than just a few standards. The reteaching that's going on now is specific to certain standards. So, the teachers look at that assessment and they do an item analysis. They take each of the items and they look at how the students performed individually and in the aggregate on those items. Which standards in the curriculum map were those items aligned to? So, which standards are the kids falling apart on? And from there, we unpack. What are they missing? What's the root cause there? Are they missing fundamental concepts? Can we look at that standard and assume that that's the kind of concept they're missing? Are they missing something that's more complex? So, that's what's happening right now. This happens prior to the reteaching, and this is a data cycle that we we learn through ANET. And then, how are we gonna reteach those concepts and skills and then reassess?
Well, that's comforting. Having seventy-five percent of students failing Algebra I was a little bit more than slightly scary. Objective three, the graph on page nineteen, you kind of skipped over it in this presentation. But it shows that at the highest level, so at those peaks, only, this is a non-evaluative walkthrough.
Right.
Instructional stuff. At the highest level, only sixty-eight percent of teachers were demonstrated clear evidence of varied assessment. Sixty-three percent, these are approximations with my eye eyeing the line, sorry. So, if they're off, that's why, demonstrated varied instruction, and forty-two percent were teaching higher-order thinking skills and about thirty-five percent differentiated instruction. So, on kind of face value, looking at graph, the graph on page seven and then the graph on page nineteen, it appears we're providing the curriculum and resources for students to learn, and we fall apart in delivering that information to students and that curriculum to students. And it appears about half of the teachers are delivering the information in an effective way while approximately half aren't.
So, here's where, one of the things that we've talked about in terms of our district leadership team, our current non-evaluative walkthrough tool asks us to measure clearly-defined or clearly, clear evidence, partial evidence. So, what's not represented here are the large number of teachers, if you took clear and partial together. And we have strict standards for clear evidence. So, there are, there's a whole nother set of teachers who are providing some partial evidence. That being said, because I don't want to sugarcoat anything, we're struggling with differentiation. We've provided some PD in it. I know that our mentor program talks about differentiation. Our feedback constantly talks about differentiation in varied instruction. I'm concerned that we had a spike and then we leveled off. So, we are definitely struggling. It's definitely something we want to work on. It's a tough concept to embed in your teaching every day. I understand that. We have students that are of various learning styles and various ability levels, so it's tough to address, but address it, we have to. So, it's definitely a concept that we we continue to struggle and provide feedback on.
And I know that objective three deals with the teacher evaluation tool. So, in thinking about that, I think that, based on this evidence of clearly demonstrating the most basic skills of effective, effective instruction, that about, I would presume and hope that the evaluation then reflects the need for implementation of an improvement plan for those teachers. And if with targeted interventions, as we're doing for students, to bump them up, to give them the support that they need to be successful, if then they are unable to be successful, my hope would be that they would be looking for employment in a different location, given that if we have expectations for increasing rigor for students, that that expectation should be the same for teachers. If we're evaluating people based on, I mean, this seems the fundamental basics of effective instruction. If we're planning to move our district forward, I think that my hope would be that about the evaluation of teachers would reflect that strongly, as well as, I know, one of the parts of the evaluation tool is professional culture for teachers, and I would also hope that teachers that felt it necessary to scream at, swear at, or speak derogatorily towards students should also be encouraged to improve in that area. And if that is unable to be attained, that they too should be looking for employment in other locations, preferably in places that they weren't dealing with adolescents or teenagers. On objective four, other buildings have outlined to us a monthly coffee that their principals are having with parents. Have you explored doing something like that in order to solicit that stakeholder feedback?
We did. We didn't get participation. We had an open house for parents to come in or a coffee early in the year. I think Mr. Abrahamson was there, and I'm not sure that anyone else was. So, we did not get a lot of participation. We do get them for the student of the quarter. Again, at the high school level, it seems to be a little different. If the students are on display, if we're celebrating an accomplishment of the kids, we seem to get the parents in, but.
And I think that that's true everywhere. I think a challenge that you face in particular is the location of your building.
Sure.
And the accessibility of that building for a community that many people don't have access to vehicles to drive them all the way up Gulfwood Road. Another thing that struck me was the parent teacher conferences in November. You said sixty-four families, twenty, two-hundred-and-thirty-six unique classroom visits. And students have seven classes. Is that correct?
They have seven classes.
So, that worked out, too. Sixty-four families visiting only three to four classrooms. And I have heard from more than one family that a challenge in engaging with the school district is having taken the time out of their schedule to go to parent teacher conferences and for teachers not being there. Would this number reflect classrooms that weren't staffed or would it reflect they just chose to just go to three or four?
My record of that night does not match that account. I have attendance records from that night, and we'll have attendance from tomorrow as well. There were teachers who were excused for specific reasons, and then they were posted, and they're required to give us three hours, which matches, I'm sorry, the three hours of the open house. They're required to make themselves available for three hours to meet with parents at an alternate time, but that was a small number of teachers. So, I'm confused about that account.
So, that sixty, sixty-four families and two-hundred-and-thirty-six, so we're gonna say that they just chose to go to?
Only attend certain classes.
Certain classes.
Yep.
Thank you. The other question I had was regarding the schedule. You said you analyzed and the student schedule. Can you explain to me the student schedule, as I have had many students try to explain it to me, and it makes absolutely no sense?
So, we analyzed, when I'm talking about the student schedule, I'm talking about the their transcript. That's what I refer to, but I can explain the schedule to you if you want to hear that. We are on a seven-day, seven-period rotation where period seven rotates through the day and every day a period is dropped. On day one, for example, students have their seven, their period seven class during first block of the day. On day two, they have it during second block, and therefore, on day one, period one would be dropped in lieu of period seven. On day two, period two would be dropped for period seven. So, every day, one of the classes is dropped. The kids take six classes a day.
And they're an hour each?
Oh, fifty-eight minutes?
Fifty. Thank you. With the credit recovery, it just struck me as painful that we have an ombudsman program, which reportedly does credit recovery, and yet we're looking at instituting another credit recovery program. Is there a reason that these students cannot partake of the ombudsman program?
Well, yeah, we have a limited number of seats. I believe we're full. We're holding one seat for an emergency at this point, but we are full in the ombudsman program at this point.
For two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
I can't speak to that.
Mm-hmm. I can. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And with those kids looking at credit recovery, do we know that it's because of courses that they've been scheduled for or is it failing classes?
I don't understand the first part, courses they've been scheduled for.
So, students have to meet certain graduation requirements?
No, these would be classes they failed, that they failed or why I said potential or actual, those, some of those twenty-eight or a lot of those twenty-eight are in those classes now, but I'm looking at their grades and my alarms are going off.
Thank you. I think, oh, just questions regarding stakeholder inputs. How the four to eight students that, for the principal advisory council, are they nominated, elected, appointed?
I opened it up to anybody who wanted to be on the principal advisory council. It was a wide-open invitation.
Okay. And then when making decisions regarding student events, how do you solicit input from students?
Through the advisory, through the advisory council and through student council.
And then, when stakeholder input is shared with you, how do you then put that input into your decision-making process? How, like, how is that weighted, I guess?
Well, for the school improvement plan, for example, they reviewed the first draft with me. They gave me some of their concerns. We talked a lot about parent engagement and how we might increase parent engagement with the faculty members that are on the school council. We talked a lot about the educator evaluation system, why it didn't work last year, how it could work better moving forward.
Excellent.
So, they they worked with me to create the goals and objectives.
All right. Thank you very much. I think that is everything.
Can I go back to, there was a question, there was a statement, but there was no question after it, when we talked about the teachers and in their progress. I just want to talk about teacher growth. I mean, for us, we've made some difficult decisions. We've made some difficult decisions already this year. But we also make difficult decisions to pursue coaching and to work with the staff we have to try and give them opportunities to internalize criticism, internalize critiques, and respond to that constructively. So, I want to talk about there is an ongoing cycle of improvement that happens as well. So, we don't automatically leap from this is the feedback or this is what the data in the aggregate shows to recommending new employment. There's a long stretch of time where we work with improvement plans or maybe not even with official plans, but we do work with that feedback and coaching cycle. The mentoring program is very helpful, the coaches, the department heads. There's a whole team of support that the teachers have to elect to take advantage of. Should they elect not to take advantage of, that's when the process becomes a little bit more intriguing.
Right, and that was what I had alluded to in targeted intervention, what we're giving to students, we should then be giving to teachers in order to help make them successful and give them those opportunities. However, my concern is that the kids that are in classrooms right now in sixth through twelfth grade, this is their one shot at sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade and twelfth grade. And that content that is being delivered, this is their one chance to get it. This is their one opportunity to achieve and have that grade level, and I think they need to be our priority. And however we can move that process along to support people and figure out if they're able to be effective and engage all students at all levels and do that in a way that meets the needs of the students and the district, I think should be expedited in the interest of every single kid that's sitting in a classroom today.
Well, it's definitely the process we're engaged in.
And that is all. Thank you.
Anybody on, to my left, anybody with questions? To my right, Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mrs. Earls. I don't want to tire you out. A lot of my questions, Mrs. Quinney touched upon, so I was checking them off as we went. My first question is general. My first question is general, and it just has to do with alignment of Common Core standards and the curriculum maps. I under, I just want to make sure that I understand. We have the, the new math and our ELA curriculum maps, and in particularly at your building, the middle school kids are tested through ANET in both math and ELA. So in reading your presentation, I was just trying to think of that alignment, and how, how does our current curriculum maps align with an ANET assessment test?
Not always perfectly, which may or may not be an issue we continue to talk about with ANET. It's not always perfect. We have a scope and sequence to our curriculum that makes sense to us. We do have to shift that around sometimes, but the ANET testing happens when it does, and the standards that they test are fixed. We aren't, it's not a dynamic test, it's not something, it's not computer adaptive, it's not something we can manipulate. It's the test we get, so not always perfectly. So that is an added layer to our data analysis portion of our data cycle, because there are certain items, when we look at our ANET data, that we don't reflect on too deeply because we know that that concept hasn't even been taught yet.
Case in point. I have three children, grade three, grade seven, grade eight. Took ANET math today. All three kids came home, and I said, "So how was it?" Oh, my God, Mom, it was so difficult, and, you know, you try to be understanding, and did you do your best, and that kind of thing, but every one of my children stated that they were tested on standards that they had not been taught. And of course, I had a canary when I heard that.
So hopefully in the future, we'll move to something that's more personalized, that's computer adaptive, and that grows with the students and allows us to be able to look at where the students are. You know, if that's a discussion we can have district-wide, then that's, that's one we'll definitely have.
Yeah, it just makes the test, I mean, I know we've talked a lot about ANET, but when you're looking at that type of data, the data becomes irrelevant, so why test them? Why burden them when you're testing them on something that they haven't been taught yet? To me, that's just futile. There's other things they need to know, obviously. So anyway, thank you for that.
Yep.
Your math, ANET example data quarterly assessment chart, I just wanted to make sure I understood it. Obviously, there's examples from some various teachers, and when they first do the assessment, we will, we're not meeting, we're not reaching that seventy percent proficient goal. So then the reteach is done, and while you stated there is significant growth in the reteach, I just want to make sure that the growth is there, but the goal of seventy percent proficient is still not met.
Right.
Is that, is that right?
Well, the initial goal, but the second part of our school-wide goal is if the students do not meet that seventy percent, and not taking away from the fact that I hope all of our students meet the seventy percent, the teachers can still meet the goal if the students, after the reassessment, show fifty percent growth.
Okay.
So they're meeting their assigned student learning goal if the student shows fifty percent growth going into the reassessment. Again, like we just talked about with Ms. Quinney, doesn't take away from the fact that we expect as many students as possible to reach that proficient level.
It's still sad news at the end of the day.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. I just want, wanted to make sure that my perception of that, or my understanding of that was, was true. I, I had a question on the quarterly math, but she touched upon that. Just the school schedule. I had, you had completed 2015, 2016 school schedule. That was part of your evaluation measure for Objective Two. When does that take place, that you start creating schedules?
Oh, that's so good that you asked us that. I met with the instructional leadership team today, and we have a schedule committee in place this year, instead of only doing it through the guidance department. I actually have a member of our academic leadership team and a member of our guidance department who are going to co-chair a scheduling committee, and they will meet for the first time next week.
That's great news. It wasn't a question that I had, but after your discussion with Mrs. Quinney, it made me wonder, when you were talking about the seven-day rotation and dropping a class each day, so it's potential that a student could have a core class dropped, like they could...
Once in a seven-day rotation, yes. Yes. So if I have English, period three, on day three, I will not have English.
All right.
Yes.
So in lieu, or in light of, not lieu, in light of our math and our ELA scoring, is there any way that a new change in schedule would allow for these core classes not to be dropped?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good.
This is a discussion we had today. We talked about this exact point today.
Thank you. The transcript review, you've talked at great length about that, and I don't want to beat that dead horse, but twenty-eight seniors face this potential. At what point does that transcript review start? Because my concern is, do we give them, do we give them enough time? If we're identifying these kids mid-February and June 5th as graduation, is that enough time for these kids?
No, we did, we did it after quarter one as well.
Okay.
And I met with the seniors after quarter one. They were met with individually, failure letters went home, yeah.
All right, so it's not a surprise to them?
It should not be, I, I know personally it's not a surprise, because I personally met with the seniors again last week.
All right. And then the other thing I was thinking of in reading this, just part of my ignorance, with the whole credit recovery program, my first question was, how are these students assessed at the end of this program to know whether or not they've met the requirements? And how is a credit recovery program similar or different than summer school? Because sometimes kids can fail a particular class and then take a couple weeks or a few weeks.
It would be very similar to summer school.
It's the same?
But what it would do for our seniors is it would give them the opportunity to participate in a summer school-like course and still allow them to graduate on time with their class.
All right, thank you.
So yes, it would be akin to summer school.
The other question I had, when you were talking about assessment data at the high school, you had your chart, terrible chart, and I'm, you know, I appreciate, let me just say, I appreciate your, your honesty and no sugarcoating here. This is a harsh, harsh reality that you're building faces, and it's not, I'm not pointing a finger at anybody, but it's very sad and very distressing to see these numbers. So I just wanted to say that off the top. But my question was, the information, I know we're always looking at ELA and math, but do we do some type of similar analysis for science or the social studies?
Yeah, we, we have quarterly summatives due. Those goals you saw are not only for our math and English teachers, they are for all departments, so we do have that kind of summative assessment, student performance data available.
And that is all I have. Thank you, Mrs. Earls.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have a couple of questions to you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Earls, for being here. A lot of the questions that I had have been answered, and I'm kind of all over the place, so excuse me while I figure this out. One of the questions that I had was in the biology retest for February, the numbers that we have in the biology. In the science departments, we know that there's a need for textbooks.
Yes.
And we know, we also know that students are being given assignments or whatnot, or asked to study more at home. What kind of things are they able to provide for these students to study at home if we have no textbooks?
It's definitely a challenge. It's a challenge we're trying to respond to. We just had a delivery of some books that our science department had, Dave Williams was able to get through, I don't know, some miracle of somebody. So we, we do have some additional textbook materials that just appeared on our doorstep literally today, were delivered to classrooms, but it's definitely a challenge. We do too much photocopying. We kill a lot of trees. We use a lot of paper, which also costs money, but that is one way. We get materials home, articles home, chapters of books home. We can't rely on the online versions of books because a lot of our students have accessibility issues. So unfortunately, that, that answer isn't available to students, and that would prevent us from reaching all of our kids. So we, we do what we can with, with what we have, but it would greatly benefit the students if they did have some materials to take home.
Right, in, in the form of PowerPoints or anything like that, that they can access and be able to see. Another one of the questions that I had, in the assessments for math and the assessments for ELA, I find it hard that some of the kids in this district are having, struggling with knowing how to write an essay, or the framework of an essay. So I want to know, I mean, I look at this, and you see the successes in some of the teachers that you provided to some of the examples. During their professional development, is there any way for these teachers to share their successes? So I guess for, for us, it would be after-action reports in my line of work. So what works, what didn't work, you know?
I like that, after-action reports. So we, we have the opportunity to do some of that. We, we do that mostly within our departments and our grade-level teams at the middle school, so not really during a full faculty PD or full faculty meeting. It would be something shared specifically with members of the science department with each other, or at the middle school, the grade-level teams do a lot of, of that, sharing of best practices. And why did this work for this kid, and why am I reaching this kid and you're not?
Awesome, thank you. One final question that I have, because everything is answered. We talk about the family-community engagement, and we know that there is an issue there. If these parents or, or any that can't make the events that, that are there, what is your policy for parents to be able to communicate with you or your staff? And is that policy, or is that shared with the community so that they know that if it is an open-door policy, they're able to pick up the phone and say, "Hey, Ms. Earls, you know, I wasn't able to make it there, but this is my concern. How can we fix this?"
Yeah, I definitely have an open-door policy. I do have parents who come in, as do all of the APs, unannounced, all the time, and that is a priority. Everyone has an open-door policy. If we're immediately engaged in something that's of a crisis nature, the parent can choose to wait or, or to come back later, but we do have an open-door policy to receive parents.
And is that shared with the parents? Like, how is that communicated?
It has been communicated, but that's a great reminder that I should probably communicate it again.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Earls.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Just briefly, I wasn't going to have any questions, and, and I will be very brief, and it's not necessarily to you, but in terms of textbooks, do we know, for example, how much textbooks cost today? Southbridge seems to have a lot of interest in textbooks, but I wonder how much, I believe Dr. Page, Dr. Page, you did that analysis, or you, you looked for that chemistry textbook today costs?
Depends on the subject, but for example, AP books are probably in the hundred and thirty-dollar-ish range, maybe a hundred and fifty, depending, since you can imagine those are expensive, but we don't have as many students probably taking the APs. But a standard chemistry book is going to probably be in the eighty to a hundred-dollar range.
So it's not...
It's not trivial.
Some people are thinking back, "Oh, yeah, well, textbooks, but that's a cheap way." It's not a cheap way at all, is it? And I would just point out that with Comcast coming in, and they, they, you know, they are taking over for Charter, and that wasn't anybody's choice, that happens, but they do have a program for students that will give them internet access at a very, very low price, lower much more than it would cost us to provide all of these textbooks. So it may just be something that we all can look into as they, as they come here, and I think that's something we could demand and ought to. So I thank you, and I thank you for all of your work tonight and standing up to this. So thank you very much.
Madam Chair, can I just make a quick, just point of clarification that even if they have internet access, they still have to have a cop, due to copyright issues, they'll have to have an online version of that book in order to access it? My understanding, so.
Which...
Usually cheaper, usually it's about half the cost.
Yes, thank you. That's the point I wanted to make.
But, yeah.
Anybody else? Mrs. Conda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. She answered. Mrs. Earls answered most of my questions that I had previously sent in her presentation, but I just wanted to kind of more make a comment. I think that everything kind of falls on the middle school, high school. It's a district-wide epidemic of failure rates of our students, and then they're put on the middle school, high school, and then they have to meet graduation requirements. In regards to literacy, a lot of the children still in the elementary level are working towards meeting those expectations. In regards to literacy and learning to read, and then they're put on the middle school, high school, and these are the numbers we get. So I just think everything, even in regards to community engagement and parent involvement, starts at the preschool level and works its way up. It's a team effort, and I just don't think, you know, I, I know these numbers are very concerning. It's sad to me, but it's a team effort where everyone in the district takes accountability for it. So in saying that, I just have a question in regards to fifth grade and the transition between fifth grade and sixth grade. What is the team effort that's taking place in transitioning, transitioning these students? And what is happening? I don't know if it's to you or to the superintendent to work together from the elementary level into the middle school level.
Well, we'd like our step up from five to six, and Ms. Dan, if you have question, something to add afterwards, but we'd like our step up from five to six, that experience to be more robust between the elementary schools and the high school. We'd like to do the, the orientations for the next year, the sixth and the ninth grade orientation. We'd like to start that process when the students are in fifth and eighth grade respectively. So we do plan on having a more robust step up. I haven't spoken with Charlton or West Street about anything more detailed than that. I don't know, Cheryl, if you have anything right now?
Thank you. Yes, you bring up a good point. One of the goals of the district is to take a look at student achievement at every grade level, so that grade-level teams of teachers are meeting together to understand student achievement at each grade level and keep students at proficient at earlier levels and to intervene at earlier levels should they be falling behind. That is the goal in the AIP with regard to data-driven instruction. It's a goal that is systemic in nature and takes a lot of trust-building amongst teachers to understand why some teachers are able to reach certain students and some teachers are not, to be able to trust and have the conversation about how to reach our students. And that, that takes a long time to develop, and it also takes a long time to understand how to effectively use the data to drive that discussion. And we bring up a good point about ANET and whether or not that is the best choice for our district. If we're looking for student growth, individual student growth, ANET may not be the choice for us.
And if I could just add, while I appreciate the comments, it doesn't take away from the fact that when they get to us, we own those kids, and we have to respond to those kids where they are. So I will not ever, you know, pretend to have the luxury of saying, "Well, this started a long time ago, and what do you want me to do about it?" That's not an attitude we can have. It's not an attitude we can have at any school in this district, but it's certainly not one that my staff can have at, at the middle, senior, high school. We own the kids that come to us in sixth grade. We own the kids that come to us in seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. Some of them don't arrive until the start of a senior year. We owe it to every child that walks through that door, to meet that child where they are and to our, do our best for those kids. So we, we can't, you know, we can't engage in a discussion about where the blame lied before. I own these kids.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Abrahamson?
And yet, Madam Chair, that's the very discussion that teachers often have. What did they learn last year? You know, and, and you blend the grade before until you get down to kindergarten or preschool. So it's, it's, there's nothing new under the sun.
Yeah, my husband taught for thirty years. I heard it every September. You won't believe the group I got.
Absolutely. They're getting worse every year.
But you got them, so it's your job to, to teach them.
Right.
Very quickly, if I may, I know we're approaching our ninety-minute mark, so we'll have to have that discussion in a second. The school-wide student learning and professional practice goals, the seventy-five percent of all students performing at a proficient level is there. The next one was teacher will participate in the design creation and pilot implementation of the district-determined measures. Is that a hundred percent, or seventy-five, or what is the...
Every teacher is supposed to have a DDM, and they are working more closely with Cheryl than with me on this particular goal.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought. Do we have a hundred and forty-one students in eleventh grade? Does that add...
We have a very large, yes, the numbers add up. We have a very large junior class.
That's the largest class in a long, long time.
Let's hope they all graduate in 2016.
Yeah. And then, family-community engagement piece. Some schools, it seems like we draw a lot of people, especially for athletic events in this community.
Yes.
That draws a lot of people. So I know that there are some schools that at the end of their season, they have a banquet or some sort of celebration, they recognize people. And some of these schools hand out athletic scholar awards during that particular ceremony, and they will take, for example, the team that has the highest GPA, and will recognize them, and that becomes a competitive thing, because you're dealing with students who are athletes, and by nature are already competitive. And then that builds into that. Perhaps if a family event such as that were to occur, we'd have a banquet where the families were invited, and we, those discussions started to take place at the same time.
Our athletic director, Ms. Caprera, is organizing an athletic banquet this year. For this year, we're just doing one in the spring, but I know that just... For this year, we're just doing one in the spring, but I know that scholar athlete-style awards are on her agenda for that, so I'm sure that you'll get information. I know that you have a child who plays.
Very good. Thank you, and I echo the sentiments of my colleagues up here when I say...oh, I'm sorry. I'll just finish up while Ms. Quinney have one last comment, but I echo the sentiments of my colleagues up here when I say thank you very much for an honest and frank presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to touch on family and community engagement. I think meaningful parent engagement doesn't, in my mind, mean that parents are showing up at events. I think meaningful that makes a difference in a child's education is that knowing what's going on in school, to be able to have a conversation about that, to share the value in education and to emphasize that at home. I think that that is significantly more meaningful than being able to go...it's wonderful to support your student or another student at an event where they're displaying their talents, but I think that meaningful key word, I think that that's the harder thing to be able to quantify, is those interactions. And I think a big part of that is what comes home from the school and how then that facilitates discussion regarding the emphasis on education, pursuing higher education and the value of that. So I know and I think that that's true at every level, but it's a very difficult thing to quantify those meaningful interactions of families with their students at home. And I just wanted to touch upon that because I don't think parent and family engagement and meaningful engagement means necessarily showing up at an event. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
It is 8:33. This point at the meeting, we determine whether we go forward or whether we convene at another meeting, so I'll leave that up for discussion. I opt to plug on, but that's mine.
I hope that we continue till we finish this meeting.
Thank you.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Lebo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Ms. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw-Lee?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
Sorry. Thank you. So now we move on to reports. A representative of the Student Advising Committee, Mr. Boizner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The National Honor Society held its second annual Adopt a Senior fundraiser on Friday, February 13th, using a silent auction format. In all, National Honor Society was able to raise almost $700 for scholarship and charitable donations. The service day will take place on a later day. National Honor Society will host its third annual spaghetti shebang on Thursday, March 14th, from 4:30 to 6:30 PM in the middle high school cafeteria. Tickets are $5 for all-you-can-eat spaghetti, meatballs, salad, and breadsticks. There will be music, raffles, and face painting at the event. The National Honor Society has raffled off a Dustin Pedroia-signed baseball, movie tickets, and coffee at this event. The National Honor Society members have completed their eight community service hours for semester one. During the next few weeks, academically-eligible sophomores, juniors, and seniors will be invited to join the National Honor Society. Eligible students must write an essay about a theme related to one of the National Honor Society's core values and fill out an application. From the applicant pool, a five-member faculty council makes the recommendations for the students who can join. The inductions for the Honor Society will take place in April and more information will come soon. The student council will be starting to plan the winter carnival this week and it'll take place on the week of March 9th. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Now, reports, school committee reports, the curriculum subcommittee. Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At our last meeting, I had informed everybody that while we...a vote was taken not to dissolve the curriculum subcommittee but to suspend future meetings unless it is required by the administration that we do meet. So what I wanted to do was approve our meeting minutes from January 21st. That was our last meeting and I hope that Dr. Page, as well as Mr. Abrahamson, receive those in their packets. I just want to keep everything clean and up to date as far as that subcommittee goes. So if either one of you, I would entertain a motion to approve those meeting minutes and have a vote and we'll be all set.
We have a motion by Dr. Page. We have a second by Mr. Abrahamson to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? The only members that will be voting on the approval of the minutes are the subcommittee members. So it would be Dr. Page, Mrs. Donovan, and Mr. Abrahamson.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
All three, yes.
Thank you very much. We're all set. Thank you.
The budget and finance subcommittee? Dr. Page, would you like to report?
Yeah, I'll provide a very brief report. The budget and finance committee had its first meeting last night at 6 o'clock. We had a general discussion that included an update from the superintendent of schools regarding the current budget process and timeline for receiving the building-level budget proposals and for amalgamating that into a document from the district proposed to us. There were a lot of issues where we're still looking at some outstanding data, getting some clarification on things, so we proposed to rearrange the schedule a little bit based on that in terms of having our recommendations coming out of that were to have another subcommittee meeting on March 9th and to have a presentation to the committee of the whole on March 18th as opposed to the committee of the whole on March 4th. We did not feel like there would be a good use of the entire committee's time at that time to have that March 4th budget of the whole presentation. And so then we also had an update from the finance director on the current FY15 budget, expenditures to date, and projected year-end balance. These were numbers current as of the end of December and we highlighted some things, actually, Mr. Osborne communicated to us, some misallocations that are in there. Those are now being rectified and so forth. And so the general consensus from the superintendent and Mr. Osborne is that we have some challenges due to some unforeseen circumstances, but they're working on ways that we're recommending to us on how to end the year on target. We then followed that with general recommendations from the superintendent regarding the major budget priorities for FY16. We had a very good productive discussion of that. I'm not going to go into all the details. There are a lot of priorities and a lot of challenges which will be coming forward later on in more detail. Too much to go into here. And then we also had a discussion of the process and timeline for preparation of the FY16 budget. One of the things that I just want to mention quickly is that we all agreed, and Mr. Osborne in particular, that it's a good idea to take a look back at the previous three-year history for each line item in order to see how we're tracking and how things have been changing in terms of what's been budgeted, what have been the actual expenditures in our recent history, and do some really good alignment in getting things planning forward. And the other thing we talked about was to start the process of not just doing an FY16 budget cycle, but at the same time be anticipating what are capital expenditures looming, things that the district needs to do, and try and plan this on a three-year basis, looking out at least initially. So that's really, we, the meeting adjourned at 6:07 PM. The minutes will be coming out draft form. I circulated 6:07, something like...and they'll be coming out shortly and that's really all I have for now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Donovan has a question.
I just have a quick question. Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Dr. Page.
Pardon?
I have a question. What time will be your meetings on the 9th and the 18th?
Uh, we're assuming that we'll do the same times.
So is that six?
We have not, we have not, we have not finalized that yet because I was waiting for confirmation from the committee of the whole to move the 18th.
All right, so we don't have a time. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
If there's an alternative time that anybody needs to propose, then we can do that. But we decided last night, for at least us, that seemed to work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, negotiation and IBB Subcommittee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The negotiation Subcommittee has a meeting scheduled with the SEIU on Thursday, March 5th, and we have IBB, not training, interest-based bargaining with the teachers' union this Thursday from 1 to 5. And that is all.
Thank you for that. I will report that the policy Subcommittee met in February, earlier this month, and obviously we did a lot of work on Section B of the manual. That was reflected in the consent agenda. Our next meeting will be held on Wednesday, March 4th. The committee will begin to review, hopefully, Section C of the policy manual and the agenda will be posted, I anticipate that, by the end of the week. Now we look to a report from the finance...oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, just as a point of order, I don't know if you placed a special order where you did, but the vote was to put it after the committee reports, so it should be actually taken up now according to the vote that we had at the last meeting.
Okay, my apologies. I put it just at the end of reports.
And I think I interrupted. Ms. Quinney, you had a question on policies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add that there will be a wellness meeting this Thursday at 6 o'clock in M100. On the agenda is discussion of the WRBS minute approval as well as a discussion regarding school nutrition. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we can move the special order up before the report of the finance director or the report of the superintendent? We can certainly just go ahead and do that. So this would be a special order regarding the acting assistant superintendent of teaching and learning position. So I would turn to Ms. Stanton and ask if she has a recommendation.
I do have a recommendation. I am pleased, as a result of a thorough investigation interview process, I apologize, to nominate Bill Latoy as acting assistant superintendent for the Southbridge Public Schools.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Abrahamson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Donovan. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair, could you clarify the motion?
The motion is to...
Concur. The motion to concur.
The motion to concur with the superintendent's recommendation regarding the appointment of an acting, Mr. Latoy as acting assistant superintendent of teaching and learning.
Thank you.
Did you get that, Julian? Is that okay? Thank you. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Dr. Page?
Yeah, one of the things that I thought would be provided with this was a confirmation of licensure and I didn't see that in my packet. The other thing that I have a little bit of a concern with, and this isn't anything other than technical, is that the resume that we received is not up to date. The other thing that I didn't see any evidence of is if there were any reference letters or any background checks or anything like that that were done. And so I would like to just mention that from my perspective until those technical details are sort of clarified and we're assured, I'm not sure we should proceed.
I can speak to that. First of all, I apologize to the committee. I did not realize that you would have required the printout of the licensure. So in my memo to you, I recommended Mr. Latoy and included in that memo that he was a licensed candidate. And I inadvertently assumed that that would suffice, so I apologize for that. So you do not have the printout of his licensure. Mr. Latoy is an internal candidate. As such, his school spring application was accepted and that was accepted as of his application to the district when he applied for principal. So that's why you would not see an updated school spring application for that. Internal candidates are allowed to simply email their intent, so then we move forward through the interview process with that. That would also include the reference letters as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Ms. Stanton. If this is approved this evening, what will be the process on filling Mr. Latoy's vacancy at Charlton Street School and what will that look like or how will that impact both students and teachers in that building?
We've had several conversations with staff regarding that potential as Mr. Latoy did rise to the finalist position through the interview process. We do have some options in that that we're pursuing. In terms of moving forward, the process would be to post internally for that position and that is a five-day post. And based on the applicants who apply, we would conduct again an interview process and move forward with the procedures.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lebo?
I too have the same question. I do have a hard time moving forward this, this evening because, or without having that specific plan in place. I mean, we've all talked about how great this school year has started with the principals in place and the schools that they're at. And to interrupt that, I mean, it's great that we're going internally to put somebody in for that position. Now, with that, the position for acting superintendent goes through June 30th and we know what the stipulations are on that. Would those same stipulations be put on the acting assistant superintendent and then the person that will fill that job? I don't have that, therefore I don't feel comfortable moving forward this, this evening.
Would you like to speak to that?
I can address that. Yes, the posting is through June 30th, as is the acting superintendent position, as would the posting for the acting principal should the vote be favorable for Mr. Latoy.
Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too had the same concerns that I voiced to the superintendent earlier. As well as going off the job description of the assistant superintendent of schools in the verification of the competency, number five said employment interviews, at least one of which will be conducted in a public forum. And I, just the whole process, I was a little confused on, as well as the job description for the director of teaching and learning, having three years of curriculum experience. In saying that, and as well as, I wanted to just see that licensure verification. She did verbally confirm to me earlier today that it was the spring, did you say?
I believe it was the fall.
The fall of this year was that licensure, and I had said that in the past, we have seen the dates of licensure. My other concern as well was having stable leadership at Charlton Street School and moving another principal into that role. My concern was that the kids would have a new face at the school as well as the parents. I wanted a smooth of a transition as possible if we do move forward with this for these families. And then in saying that, as a school committee member, my role is overseeing that of the superintendent, supporting and respecting her authority in regarding this appointment, but I just felt that I wouldn't be doing my due diligence to the community if I just didn't voice those thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion that was made is kind of open-ended. It wasn't given an effective date and it wasn't given a through date. That's something that could be addressed or an amendment to the motion if we opted to go that route, or we could define those terms through a pending contract if we were to go through. So we are where we are right now. We have a motion on the floor and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none? Oh, did you have some? Mrs. Donovan?
We just have a quick question about technicality, I guess. Does the school committee, we're not the official people appointing Mr. Latoy. We are concurring with the superintendent's recommendation. So even if we were to vote no, she could in fact still appoint him. I just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
Right, okay. Thank you, if I may.
Mr. Lebo, and then?
So, just to add to that and to what Dr. Page said, our role is only to ensure the licensing. I mean, it is her, Ms. Stanton's, in the end, her desire to hire or appoint him to that position, then it will happen.
Yes. Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe that our role is to either approve or disapprove the appointment that Ms. Stanton moves forward. If we choose to disapprove or vote no to that, then we have to give a reason for that and that would be not appropriately licensed, those sorts of things. That being said, as our official role in this process, I think if an interview committee has determined that Mr. Latoy is the best candidate for the position, Ms. Stanton wants to...
the position, Ms. Stanton wants to appoint him, and he has proven himself capable of the position and is licensed for it, I think, we would have no grounds to disapprove the appointment. I also share concerns regarding consistency and stability at all of the buildings, and my hope would be that we move forward in a way that clearly ensures that moving forward. I'm a little uneasy that for a, through June 30th, we don't know what's happening after June 30th, or how long that might last. We've said that a Superintendent search might take us to the middle of next year. That transition would be a difficult one. And I think we all share those concerns, but I think Mr. Latoy is the candidate that has risen to the top, has the qualifications, and I fully support the Superintendent in her appointment. And I think Mr. Latoy has had a great vision for Charlton Street School, as well as the district, and I think he would be an excellent asset in moving the district forward if it, in this interim Acting Assistant Superintendent position. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, could I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Levo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
All yes?
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Latoy. We move on now to the report of the Finance Director. We resume there.
I think Dr. Page summarized very well the meeting of the other evening. To dovetail on some of what he mentioned, all of the principals do have three years of prior financials. And where the middle high school is concerned, I have consolidated the financials for the former Wells and Cole Avenue High School building for some degree of consistency in reporting. There is obviously the difference between the two buildings becoming one, things like that. Otherwise, the Finance Department is, you know, up to our eyeballs in budget right now. We are in the process of finalizing staffing, verifying steps, columns, moves, and things like that. And we have met with three of the four principals today, Mr. Latoy, you're next on my list, in regards to the budget process, answering questions, and working with them to make the process as easy as possible. We're hoping to have final reports from them by the end of the week, and consolidating that, and working on something to present to the Finance Subcommittee by, I believe it was, March 9th. That's it.
Thank you so much. Ms. Stanton, the report of the Superintendent, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've had a few very busy weeks. I think despite March being right around the corner, we are still concerned about potential snow that we may have. To this point, the school year, we have had seven snow or weather-related cancellations to date. This puts the last day of school into the week of June 22nd. We are currently considering options for changes in the school calendar that might affect the last day of school, should we need those days for any more cancellations. I will say that for once in my life, I am hoping that we have no more snow, no more snow days. So just for everyone, the public and staff, we are making, we are having thoughts and considerations towards a change in the schedule, but only if we have more snow. Central Office and Building Administrators are currently working on our budget for the FY15-16 proposal. We have met with School Committee, Finance Subcommittee, thank you for that. We are also meeting with the Town Manager as we prepare for our budget presentations. We have a challenging economic environment ahead of us, and we are currently analyzing all parts of our school department in an effort to meet the town parameters set forth in the Joint Town Council and School Committee meeting of last week? It was last week. And finally, we have a DESI highlight meeting with our Plan Monitor, Pat Williams, tomorrow. We have also, this past week, the week before, rather, had a joint meeting with DESI Accountability Office Staff, our DSAC staff, our consulting staff, and our support staff, and internally with our ILT, IRSs, and administrators, to discuss our progress to date and improvements for our AIP. And those are improvements that can occur for this year as we move forward through June, but also as we start to consider revisions to the AIP for next year, which include many of the things that you heard Principal Earls discussing around assessments, and some of our benchmarks, and some of our measuring tools, so that we are actually impacting student achievement for each child of the Southbridge Public Schools. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on now to School Committee actions. The first is a vote to ratify the Acting Superintendent Agreement effective January 13, 2015, through June 30, 2015.
So move.
Mr. Abrahamson makes the motion. A second?
Second.
A second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Nope, I'm gonna have to do the roll call. Our recording secretary had to leave at nine o'clock, so I'll start. Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Levo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Thank you, and I will say yes as well. So that's unanimous. Thank you for that. The next is a vote to ratify the Acting Director of Finance Agreement, which, this was, Mr. Osborne, by way of explanation, served as Acting Finance Director from August 12th till his appointment as Finance Director on February 10th. So this is an agreement during that time period. Is there a motion?
So move.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll do roll call. Start down here. Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Levo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Me as well. Thank you. The motion carries. Under unfinished business, a quick update on the Superintendent's search. I contacted five companies to date, reached out to five companies. I have heard back from three of them. One of them has declined to submit a proposal. We have some information from other two that I just presented to the School Committee this evening in a packet, so it's premature to be discussing those in any detail. About 5:30 today, I received an email from another company that would like to speak with me tomorrow. So work on that continues, and there will be further updates. And at some point, I anticipate having perhaps people come and make a presentation to the School Committee. So I just wanted to update the committee on that. The other thing I wanted to mention is there was, there's talk about a Superintendent's Search Committee. The reason we're not forming that committee at this point is, again, that would be premature. It's, we hire a consultant to walk us through the process, and the consultant would be in a better position to help us with that process and also timeline. So, you know, if we sent out a general call now, we're not really sure when things would take place, when the actual interviews would take place, and we want to be cognizant of people's time. So down the road, when it's appropriate, there will be a search committee formed, but it's premature to do that right now. New business. The next regular School Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 10, 2015, 7:00 PM in Council Chambers. Ms. Stanton discussed already the school calendar snow day situation, so I don't think there's any reason for us to revisit that now. But Mrs. Donovan had asked that a couple of items be removed from the Consent Agenda. She'd like to speak to that now.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The first one was looking at the first reading for Policy BHC, School Committee and Staff Communications. Just reading through it, two things that jumped out at me. Under the last paragraph of visits to schools, there's the first sentence and then a second sentence. The third sentence is scratched out, and then the fourth sentence is just reiterating the same as sentence number two. So I just want, there's like a duplicate of sentences there. So I just wanted to just point that out, that whatever is bold just needs to be deleted or something like that.
If you can give that to me, I can bring it forward to the committee.
Okay. And the other question that I had relative to this particular policy, this policy is in regards to staff communications to the School Committee. And it says that any communication or report from principals, supervisors, teachers, or other should be submitted to the Superintendent. My question was, do we have a separate one of how those same type of people, how they would submit information if the information they have is about the Superintendent? And by, what I mean by that, if the information or the report that they have is relative to the Superintendent, should that information be forwarded to the Chair of the School Committee, rather than to somebody else or an individual School Committee member? So I didn't know if that particular scenario should also be placed in this particular policy, or do we have one somewhere else, and I'm just not aware of it?
I'll bring that to Policy Subcommittee.
Okay, thank you. The other question that I wanted to bring up was File BIA relating to new School Committee member orientation. The first sentence, there's a line that's deleted, but then the flow of it, just after what is deleted, the flow just doesn't make sense there. So I just think it sounded weird, and we need to go back and look at that. And then it states that the new School Committee members should have at least eight hours of orientation training. My suggestion was that we state through MASCE, because that's where we have been, you know, historically getting our information from, whether it's attending a off-site seminar or attending their annual conference in Hyannis. I thought it might be pertinent to specifically state in there of where the, that orientation training should take place, or through, you know, what venue that should take place. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Member Forum, is there any member who would like to speak this evening? Any item? Mr. Levo?
I'll be brief. First off, thank you again, Ms. Earls, for your presentation. It was a great presentation. And I know that if there's any issues, that they're taken care of by you or your staff immediately. I also want to say that I attended the Worcester Sharks game, in which Charlton and West Street Chorus performed the National Anthem and God Bless America, and it was awesome. The kids did a great job. I was very well pleased. I tried to record it on my cellphone. It didn't sound as good as it did, listening to these kids. Again, hats off to those kids, and great job for performing and representing this school district.
Thank you. Anything else? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In regards to community engagement, the Willy Wonka event at Eastford Road School was a great hit, I know, with my family. And another opportunity that parents have is this Thursday at West Street School, they're doing a literacy and math night. So I would encourage parents to look for that yellow form that should have come home in students' backpacks, in order to get more information and to register for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. I had those, but I also wanted to add that tomorrow, and Mrs. Earls touched upon it, but just to remind, middle school and high school families tomorrow, there's parent-teacher conferences at the middle high school from 4 to 7. And the other thing I wanted to mention, I know there's been, I've seen it in the newspaper, perhaps it's on the district website, too, but on March 10th, there's a Festival of Music and Arts for the Southbridge Public Schools. I know Dr. Garcia is running it, and I just wanted to check with Mrs. Earls while you're here. That seems like an all-day event. Does it start at like 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon and go into the evening, do you know?
No, it starts...
No, because I just, the only thing, I thought that it did, because I had cut it out.
No, it does start in the afternoon. It will be displayed, might as well be displayed in the morning, maybe, later in the day, but it's, you know, the other door, but that people have to start at 8:00, not at 4:00.
Okay, and does it run till like 7:00 or 8:00?
Yeah, this is beginning to start.
Because that's our School Committee night. That's our next meeting, and I didn't know if that, if we felt it was important enough to attend that, if we should...
You could, you could, you could back off.
Okay, I wasn't sure of the timing. Okay. All right, that's all I had then. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to inform parents and students that there are MCAS, Spring 2015 MCAS Practice Tests on the, it's, the website is doe.mass.edu, starting at grade three. There's ELA and math, MCAS practice tests, tests for your students. And I also just wanted to mention that last week, my family and I went to Gillette Stadium, the Hall at Patriot Place, had a great interactive math program for kids, and that is also online as well, and it's www.mathmovesu.com. So M-A-T-H-M-O-V-E-S-U.com, which incorporates math and science. And they're free, it's free, and there's some fun games. And it also is a, it explains math for parents, too, which I know when we did the School Committee survey a couple of years ago, a lot of parents had trouble helping their children with their math homework. So it has definitions of math words on that website, and helpful hints for parents, and fun games of math and science for the students as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We will be having an executive session this evening pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the governance bargaining or litigation position, and the Chair so declares, I do so declare, to discuss potential litigation, interest-based bargaining with the Southbridge Education Association, and Service Employees International Union Local 888. Also pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel regarding the Director of Finance Contract and the Supervisor of Maintenance and Facilities Contract. So...
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, start down there. Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Levo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
And myself. It's unanimous. Thank you. The School Committee will reconvene in open session for the purpose of adjournment only. Thank you all very much, and have a good evening.